...for nineteen months named three. So welcome everybody to the Central Capitol Theater. There's sixty people in the crowd. And at this time, I want to invite Troy Roser. He is here to give us a report on something today, but I'm also going to ask him if he will step up and be willing to be your organization.
Sure. Let's pray together, y'all. Heavenly Father, when you first come to you and say we love you, we thank you for your wonderful grace and your love for each of us. We thank you for our help. We help you for this. We thank you for this community, Lord, City of Liberty. To God, tonight, we ask you to give us wisdom, give us guidance, give us knowledge that we may serve and do the very best we can for you, Lord. We hope all this is in your will for your precious son, Jesus Christ's name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. We just stand with you. The place.
Pledge allegiance to the Father, and to the United States of America. For your love, for your strength, one nation, united in heaven. In the name of the Lord, the Lord is our God.
So next on our agenda is a presentation. And so Mr. Roser is our city engineer. I'm going to invite you to come up to the mic. I think you have to unmute that mic. So we can look at the little button there. And he's going to give us a presentation on the SCAP grant.
Mr. Troy.
Is there a button on there on the top somewhere? There's a couple of buttons on it. Which one's the menu?
Yeah, you should just have pushed it down. It's not the...
We struggle with it a lot.
I'm sitting down.
All right, Daniel, we need to have you in the advanced switch seats.
How about now?
There we go.
Gentlemen, ladies, a year and a half, two years ago, we were here. We had developed a capital improvement plan for your water system infrastructure for the future. We also had put together a sanitary sewer system infrastructure improvement, capital improvement plan at that time likewise. Y'all endorsed this. Tonight, we're going to be talking about the water issue and the sewer. And then we'll come back to your topic, the water again. But the water portion, y'all tackled it and endorsed a capital improvement plan of which we prioritized. We sat down, looked at it a year and a half ago and said, okay, here's our number one priority, number two, three, four, on the downwind line to about island of fifteen. And then added up to millions of dollars, of course, we can't afford all of that. But this past summer, it was released that the SCAP money, South Carolina Infrastructure Investment Plan, which was the ARPA money from the federal government, American Rescue Plan Act. It was nothing to say a little less than $2 billion. They left it recently. Had another five, excuse me, .5 billion to be 2.3 something billion dollars total. In the meantime, we had taken here a capital improvement plan, which we must have endorsed by the city before we can start going after grants. Michael said, let's dig into it. So we dug into it. Tim Moore, I don't know, Tim, Tim and I got together, went back. We started prioritizing things based on age of pipe, OPBC pipe, as best as cement pipe, which we not meaning empty use. That's the guy has bestest in it. It's fine in the ground. It's just when it's ended the rest of it becomes a hazardous waste. An old cast iron pipe. But predominantly, we looked at areas where we had on 160 PSI, ounce per square inch pipe, which they don't even make anymore, which is an inferior product of the base standards. The past thirty, forty, fifty years, we've exceeded that already on many of your lines. So in general, we were upgrading some of your old lines based on priority, based on leaks, based on structural complaints. But from an engineering standpoint, we looked at hydraulic analysis on how the lines would feed water into the system. We want to make sure we upgraded the lines to the right size and also loop them to... Anytime you loop a line, it changes your head loss dynamics. Not any further than that. And your hydraulic system, but it greatly enhances your hydrology system, not just linearly, parabolic, moving to the square. So looking at your lines is very important. That being said, Michael said, Troy, I need to look for X amount of project because we have to put a match. The city has to put a match with this. He said, let's go look at this. So Tim and I got together. Michael got together with us. And we started re-prioritizing just slightly to make sure we defined the project we wanted to present through an application to South Carolina, to the Rural Infrastructure Authority, who administers all this money with the approval of the General Council. That being said, we put together this application. You can see there's a fitness to it, but it's what we sent to SCAPs even more detailed than this. But I won't, I'm not going to read the whole thing. I know you won't be too. Please, it's a little chunky. I mentioned the capital improvement plan. Come on. Water quality is one of the issues we want to look at, enhancing the system, the capacity. We want to make sure we got future capacity. The pipe age, if you're interested, we have to talk about. Residual pressures. Now, what residual pressure is, at two o'clock in the morning, if you go to your house and you put a gauge over your house, water faucet, so to say, X PSI, okay? That's when nobody's using water in your system. But just like water in the sprinklers in the yard, if you got one sprinkler going, it's nice and pretty. I might be using this one. You have way out there. But when you put three or four sprinklers, they'll shrink the water that's going out. So the residual pressure is reduced the more people use the water, the more sprinklers in your yard. So residual pressure is a huge issue. We look at hydraulics. We're enhancing the residual pressures in your system with these upgrades. We talked about customer complaints, project projected growth. And pretty much what I told you. But we put together this map. Now, I've got a big tree, that's somewhere. It'll fit on the wall, okay? This is your overall capital improvement plan. We took what was re-prioritized for the third time and put the numbers together for projects on Old Palmetto Street, Blue Ridge Drive, another course of Blue Ridge Drive, Lee Street, Houndee Drive, Room Humber Road, South Beach Street, Black Bottom Road, for a total project cost... Michael, do you have it?
I do, mother.
Well, now, I am following. We can hear this review. We've got too many things going on with y'all. Total project cost here of $2,007,670, of which y'all have to put a 20% match, which is a little over $400,000. That being said, y'all have been awarded the full amount we asked for. Good job. Congratulations. $1.63 million, $136. The City of Liberty provides a grant through the SCAP program, RIA property, which I'll tell you about in a minute. Michael and I and a few others sat down, looked together, and made it happen. I know y'all are aware of this as we've done, but we got this full amount, which is great. A lot we can say today. So congratulations. So give yourself a round of applause. Now, what does that mean next? When Michael took another step, he said, Troy, I want these projects ready. Everybody's going to be coming after this money in the state when it's released. So Michael said, I want it dirt ready. Michael, you got a certain hand to that with the B. People pay hundreds of dollars to beat you. What can you say?
I swear with you, I'm good.
Me too. We, Michael said, we got to make it dirt ready. That means, dirt ready means we're ready to dig in the ground. We're ready to do that. If y'all said, let's go, we could bid, set up. Rural Infrastructure Authority says we got to tend the meeting on the 31st of this month in Columbia and understand how those programs will work. We've got to meet certain federal requirements such as American Steel. We got to use the right products, make American products. We got to make sure everything, everybody's distributed fairly. It's with the, people are working on the job. They're paid fairly. Data Staking Act. They'll check the wages on there. All that's great because everybody has to do that pretty much anyway with grants now. But that will be happening on the 31st. As soon as we get permission, Michael, what are we going to do? We're going to work on this project. We're going to advertise at the Stevo, and we have to advertise 30 days. So we're projected somewhere around July 15th plus or minus to bid the project and get the work right after that. Contract with the board. Any questions on the SCAP grant? Water tastes better than sewer. We're going to live on the sewer, okay? Y'all have been working on another project. Y'all also, Michael's pushed us to see if we get grant money for sewer, continue to work on your sewer infrastructure. We are under a consent order, which we have had for years, to upgrade certain parts of the system. Two parts of the system are on O'Nar Road. They'll have a current lift station. And some of y'all may be new from the last time we talked about. As soon as it goes downhill, it'd be nice if you could just continue on the side of the grid in a pipe all the way down to the treatment plant on Lakeview Mall River. But it doesn't always work that way. We work, we live in different range swales or basins around Liberty. So sometimes it may go, what normally will go this way, they go over the hill and fall on the rain drop off the top of the hill this way. Once it hits a certain point, we put in a lift station. All we do is pump it in a big wet well. The sewage goes in there. We pump it up over the hill to the pipe against the water treatment plant. That being said, O'Nar Road Lift Station, we have a grant up there. On US 178, headed out of Liberty to the North Airport, Cory Road on the right, if you know where that is. There's a little small lift station right in the corner. It's a little fixed line. And then you ever ran out of looking at it, next time you would. We're going to take that and just get rid of it. Because we'll take a traffic line, a downhill to the existing town road lift station. And we won't have to pump it. We won't have to keep up with changing our pumps. And then we'll just start dropping these other resources for other things. That being said, today, we had the, right down here, we had, for construction and construction contingency, we had a budget of $718,000. And today, we got a bid for $659,000 because the parents look good. The next bid was around $718,000. And we had a third bid plus the $100,000. That being said, this is all unofficial. I've tagged it in check things. We don't have everything quite together. It's together enough for what I told you. But I'll be giving this information to Michael through a certification of a bid evaluation. So y'all have any other grant? Of course, we have sewer systems to move forward. Antelope, we had a busted... Thank goodness, the budget we had before, we had one bidder. Remember, high micro system was starting. We had to wait a little time, about four, five months, I think it was.
At least, yes, sir.
In the sweep bid. So it was a good play. Sometimes it works, sometimes it doesn't. It's kind of a deal. I think it's still you did it instead of me, so.
I'm just chief.
What? You just chief. Yes, you are. But it was. Any questions on the sewer project? Cory Road, O'Nar Road, Lift Station. The grant amount for that project, y'all already looked at from before is $410,000 out of that total. Don't receive the grant to make this happen. Now, on all these grants, they make you spend your money first, okay? And then they bring you money. It's a bigger way to go. Any questions? I got another one.
I did ask a question. Who was, who were some of the contractors that did all the jobs?
The apparent low bidder today that we'll probably recognize hasn't been low bidder. Let's see. Paying the, paying the income of LW Incorporated. LW Incorporated is out of Anderson, very wrecked from the continent. Paying the income, they were here today. They, they were ones with a low bid before we looked at this. They were only good, and this is the one we... They got their number. So it was a smart move. Also, we had today, you guys were giving, with the bids all over this place, took a little pipeline out of Witsmith. They're almost over the heart of Northern area. Very wrecked with contract. All of them ordered it. There's a lot of work in the market right now, but evidently, there's a little failure in section. I think we'll get a little bit of work before all this SCAP money gets, and then it's going to go crazy throughout the state with that much money. So LW, PMC was number two, 3B was number four, I hope. We solicited that almost 10 did this time. So we have 30 show up. I'll take an appointment on this night. Any other questions? Now, in light of the SCAP money, Pickens Regional Joint Water System matured under member of the New Water Treatment Plan on Lake Keweenaw. It is moving out. Number one, we solicited out of 5 under members to SCAP. We got $10 million from them. Of that, y'all will have a portion of that. Okay, that's, again, spent over by... We have a $10 million per day water treatment plant on Lake Keweenaw. We're looking at some brand new filtration processes that two of the companies will be, and I hate to be on the edge of technology. I'd rather be back, let somebody else fall off. These have actually been highly tested. Ceramic membrane filtration, which is in this day and time, other than the reverse osmosis, which you can't go forward, is the best... Ceramic membrane is the best treatment process you get. I had a meeting today with our treatment engineers. We're doing a pilot test on Lake Keweenaw on the exact site. Where we'll be pulling water out of the lake. We're having to do very little chemical feed, fluctuation, very little. We have to adjust pH seasonally. So far, that's about it. It's, it's working well. We got a great report today on the reduction in what we call NTUs, which is just suspended stuff in the water as they pull it out. They still pull it out very well. But Thursday, Eric and I are headed to Columbia. Bobby has a lot to go with us to go. We've got a Pickens Regional Joint Water System team that went to Washington DC, which was Erica, Mayor Fletcher from Pickens, Joe Gunn from Six Mile Water District, Tom Ponder, who's the chairman of the Pickens Regional Joint Water System. I think that was our whole team, right?
Yeah.
Kyle Schell, our lobbyist. Well, we're taking that same dream team to Columbia Thursday. We'll be leaving about 7:30 in my parking lot. Okay, just confirm that with Tom today. We'll, we'll head to Columbia to meet the US Department of Agriculture, World Development, of which y'all managed some scenes in Washington, New York. What they provide is very limited for some of them. Sometimes under grants, core projects based on, I think that rate analysis will end up here with them. But we will go through a whole agenda. And I'll be quick with this. Where we started and how to get, how to get with the works today. Tom Ponder will be here for that. The lead for the project, Eric, you're up next. The lead for the project from City of Liberty Assembly, from the city of Pickens standpoint, Fletcher Perry, Joe Gunn from Six Mile, Larry Hudson from Eastland Central Water District. I made these fill in for that one. Meanwhile, the lead for the project, as you know, we're not doing that. We've gone through that. After that, we'll go through the project progress, the water treatment plant from Tony Reed, our engineer, Andrew Hopkins from GM Sub, which worked as a self consultant under me, very agreeable. They'll go through the preliminary process design, the filtration methods, which we're talking about ceramic to there. That's where we're leading right now. Construction delivery method will be different than just designing the project, business agility, something called C-MAR, Construction Management Appellatives, which we bring the contractor in upfront for the project so they can be part of the designs. We can go ahead and order electrical transformers. They're two years out right now. So they're going to get ready for them the way on the site. Certain steel, certain equipment, especially with the water treatment plant, you may have some expert equipment that you've got to have or some instrumentation that you've got to have for the process of this, even the membrane filtration, which is, y'all ought to see. It's a little funky, you know? I'm sure you'll be here sometime. If I've done that part, we'll get that another time. That, that part's out two years. We've got company that we are leaning toward right now to start to show this bill, which, hold on, we're leaving. They're going to be, this will be the first plant in the southeast. They've got one in Montana. They're all over York, okay? Trying to prove, they're starting to make, it's all over the place. But we'll be a showcase. We'll be a pilot. Concrete, I'll say that, not concrete, so. We'll be a concrete type recipient of membrane, ceramic membrane process and plant in this area. We're developing... We're tied up at Clemson University right now. They're doing our water sampling. They're telling us how good the water is. I was blessed at the Engineering Technology Conference, bringing about my wife, Dr. Kerry. Dr. Kerry, Clemson University, looks like the top dog even. Now, he's been a national presentation player. The D.C. guy, we had met with him three weeks before. He's lovely. Tell him what we want to do with this membrane filtration. Get their lesson up before we start it. The D.C. guy walks up, Rich, Rich Wells is his name. He walks up, Dr. Kerry was talking to me. I'm just meeting him. He's, y'all have any problem with that. That's the best word around in front of the D. So that felt really good, the process of it. Also, on the water treatment plant, the FERC, State Energy Regulatory Commission, we have to get a license from them to give the energy. Pilot testing, I just mentioned to you, now, it's really big to test companies out there with their own technology, testing the water. The geotech analysis, the site plan, we're fixing to get into it. Michael, Eric, as far as figuring out what the things are going to look like, that'll be coming to y'all next. Current status of everything going on. Transition is stored. That's Roser Group, my group, the design. We've drawn up 66 pages of plans, new plans for the distribution line so far at this point. We got a water, excuse me, water storage tank location now tied down. And we're working on the actual meters of this government recipient, he being one of them. We'll be using the design bid deal. We don't want methods delivered for this. We're designing it. We'll have a bid, just like you did here today with the sewer. Construction delivery methods, I mentioned that earlier to y'all. Funding sources, we're going to mention. We're going to be transparent with Ken USDA and say, look, Tom Ponder's going to mention our SCAP, what we got in Pickens Regional. And Kyle Michelle's going to mention the other one that he got from Lindsey Graves' office. Over $100,000 for Lindsey Graves' office, also Clemson. And then USDA, already looked up. We're going to just lay it out there and say, how do we all work together for the citizens of Pickens County? USDA, how can y'all help us? How can we work together? Because they're not too fond of the C-MAR process. We can save about a year. It's time, construction method. Has actually been $5, $18 million based on inflation. If you're going to have high inflation, you hear that's a lot of money. So that's what we're going down first to do. See how to get more money, low interest. So don't just think about that. Put that in your prayers if you, if you believe that way, please. We're going to make the best effort we know how. That's what we're going to go, it's here for. That's how a lot of cities and towns and water districts and some poor factions make it by these low interest loans with a payback scheme based on their water rates or sewer rates. Any questions on that? And I'm finished. If there's y'all...
Thank you so much, Troy. Thank you so much.
Back to you for your time this evening.
Yes, now, thank you. And I appreciate all that you've done in helping give those, those grants, getting that SCAP money awarded in both. Just the 1.6 plus the 10 million for the Pickens Regional Joint Water. And thank you. I appreciate it.
You're very welcome.
Appreciate you all with us. And yes.
It's blessed into it, actually. Bless Michael.
Yes, I am. And I'm telling you, this has been a process, and there's so much work that is going on behind the scenes. And this started, how did you get this actually started?
We actually met with all the county water planners, the industrial part out here in 2007, October, November, to say, hey, look, here's a, there's an economic model on what is going to be the best for the future of water in Pickens County. Even prior to that, 2011, 2012, in the Pickens County Water Department, which is also in this, Strong Thermonics Institute put together a study plan on where the primary sources of water in Pickens County are the strongest. They actually became the model for, you know, all the information. They, they made it look pretty, good, much in worst. Lake Keweenaw, Salute Lake, that was their results. And, you know, they recommend the future should go to Lake Keweenaw. So we're following through with that. 2012, Pickens County Water Department, 2017, economic models on, should we stay on range? Should we do it on plant? If favored to go with a on-plant substantially. And now that we're getting that, it's going to be a long time.
Yes, a long time and a lot of persistence and diligence. And so thank you for...
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much.
So, yes, and I'm proud of this council. I know this, we voted on this when we were on council, when I was on council, to become a member of this Pickens Regional Joint Water system. And so just keeping, yes, and keeping that going. And we've got a great team in City Hall along with commissioners on Pickens Regional Joint Water Systems, which our administrator and I are part of that. And so I'm just grateful to this council for continuing that and continuing to direct our, our staff to continue on that path. So good things, more good things to come on that. All right, so next we've got, the agenda is a proclamation, a proclamation tonight. This is Teacher Appreciation Week, May 8th through May 12th, 2023. And I'm going to go ahead and read this. Whereas teachers play a crucial role in shaping our children into the people they will become, supporting them in their youth and teaching lessons that add an impact on students they will carry through life. And whereas teachers dedicate their lives to students and families by working long hours, preparing lessons, correcting papers, and planning for growth opportunities. And whereas in the City of Liberty alone, there are approximately 200 teachers employed by the Pickens County School District and many homeschooling and abroad teachers. Whereas it is an honor to recognize teachers and to observe their dedication. Now, therefore, I, Erica Long Wilkes, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the City of Liberty, South Carolina, hereby proclaim May 8th through May 12th, 2023, as Teacher Appreciation Week and ask our citizens to join in this special observance. So thank you to all of our teachers. Do we have any teachers here? Raise your hand. Without mine, just for Zach Arm. So thank you for all that you do. I'm a homeschooling teacher. I taught my son from first grade through graduation. So it's, it's a challenge and it is definitely a rewarding experience. So I'm sure you feel those rewards yourself. We, we got our council member, Andy Ray. Will you help your teacher?
Yeah, I talk to someone in the theater when I was speaking for sixteen years.
Not in the public school anymore, still working in educational technology, but I have an immense amount of respect for what teachers are working through in the environment in education as a part of it. They've got a lot of barriers they have to work through on a daily basis, and, um, I can, I can vouch that four or five years ago, when I got out of classrooms and stuff, it is not about any of the COVID. Um, we've got some very, very good teachers in Pickens County, outstanding administrators, and, you know, our graduate school, they're our, um, our, our pop, so, so, I personally very much appreciate it, thank you.
Yes, and I'd just like to applaud our teachers. All right. And Mayor's announcements, um, part of that announcement, I'm gonna let Troy Roger talk about the ten million that we received. I know that I did make that announcement, the one point six that we received as a city, and then to add to that was the ten million that we received from the state grant for the Picking Regional Point Water System. So that was, that was another, um, lots of good news there. Also, um, last week was Municipal Clerk Week, and so we wanted to recognize Bailey. She is our clerk, and, uh, she's been doing such a great job, Bailey Locke, we appreciate you and all that you do to help with our agendas, getting those ready for some packets ready, and all the other stuff that goes along with that. She does a lot of research to help the ordinances, and helps lending, to write up confirmations. Just, that's just a little, a little portion of her job, so Bailey, we appreciate you. Oh, yes, and she just graduated, and HR again from SLU, so congratulations. She's graduating Friday, right? So we're proud of her. All right, do we have anybody signed up for the public session? So no one speaks tonight. All right, next is the approval of minutes for our April tenth regular session. Do I have a motion to approve what is written? Okay, I have a motion by Councilor Ray Deal, do I have a second?
Second motion.
Okay, and I have a second by Councilman Hackett. Do I have any discussion on that? All right, all those in favor of approving the minutes is written, please signify by saying aye, raising your hand. All right, we've got unfinished, the whole business, this is our second reading of twenty twenty-three dash zero five, which is the redistricting ordinance to amend section twenty dash three. This ordinance is regarding the change in the ward lines due to the twenty twenty census data. So this has nothing to do with annexing or widening our orders. Please, that is not what this is, and there's a lot of misinformation that gets put out there on some of the social media. Um, this has nothing to do with that, we did explain that in the last meeting. Um, this is required, um, by the state, because of the twenty twenty census, we, the city of Liberty did grow in population a little bit, so because of that, we had to redistrict our wards to make sure that we were doing that each ward was, um, yes, approximately the same as far as, um, population in each ward. So, that's what that is. Um, this is our second reading, so do I have a motion to approve the second reading of twenty twenty-three with verified redistricting ordinance to amend sections twenty dash three?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, I have a motion by Councilor Massey, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, and I have a second by Councilmember Whitaker, do I have any discussion? All right, all those in favor of the second reading of twenty twenty-three dash zero five, please signify by raising your hand and saying aye. Aye, aye, and it's unanimous. All right, on to new business. We have a first reading of twenty twenty-three dash zero seven, South Carolina Local Revenue Services Ordinance. This ordinance is regarding the change in the name of our current business license collection taxes programs through MASC. And I'm gonna go ahead and ask, um, don't forget, she'll just give us a brief summary of that.
Can you hear me? Can you hear me? I think my mic is just.
Yeah, yeah.
Not that I can hear me already. Um, so, uh, I got a memo from MASC, and I'm gonna read it, because it kind of better explains this, so I don't make it confusing on you. The Municipal Association has offered collection programs for certain business license taxes. These programs include the insurance tax collection program, the broker's tax collection program, and the telecommunication tax program. The Municipal Association, Association has collectively rebranded these programs as Local Revenue Reservices, and has renamed these three business license programs as the insurance tax program, and the tax, broker's tax program, and the telecommunication tax program. Every municipality in the state has adopted a revised business license ordinance based on the Act of, um, one hundred and sixty-seven and the new model ordinance provided. As a result of the Local Revenue Services rebranding and the adoption of the new Local Business License Ordinance under Act one hundred and seventy-six, the Association is required to update the ordinances in agreement by which municipalities may participate in the Local Revenue Services. So, to better explain that, we're already a part of these services, they're rebranded and renamed, and therefore we have to create a new ordinance, re-sign our agreement, and, um, redo our supplement that we're wanting to be a part of these. And that, that ordinance is pretty much showing the same thing, just they're renaming.
The programs haven't changed.
They have not changed, they just merged together.
Okay, all right, so, after hearing that, do I have a motion for accepting the first reading of twenty twenty-three dash zero seven?
I have a motion.
Okay, I have a motion by Councilor Ray Deal, do I have a second?
I'll stop.
And I have a second by Councilman Shune, do I have any discussion on that? All right, hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand and saying aye. I have the Shune on this. Okay, and we've got our first reading of twenty twenty-three dash zero eight, which is fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, the general budget. Um, we had a very big budget retreat on that Saturday, so thank you all for, it was a few hours there, we discussed the budget. We had a lot of new questions, and then, um, I appreciate the council being there and, and chiming in, and so, I'm going to ask for a motion to accept that first reading of our general budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-three dash twenty twenty-four. Do I have a motion?
I have a motion.
Okay, and I have a motion by Councilor Ray Deal, and a second by Councilwoman Whitaker? Do I have any discussion on that? All right, all those in favor of our twenty twenty-three dash zero eight ordinance for our fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, general budget, please signify by saying aye, raising your hand. All right, next on the agenda, and I haven't had reports, so you see those there. If you have any questions for, um, we've got Captain Sam here, if you have any questions for him on their report, you see that answer everything you may have. If not, then we'll move on, you see, we have a report to report. And if you have any questions on that, you know, Michael can take questions back to to Tim, and get back to you on that. I'll read parts of the, um, I'll read their report, tackle football, opportunity signups will begin on the day for online registration, any person will be there in a month. And our school camp in Carolina has been in contact, and they are only beginning construction of the campus on the hills and tennis courts, so that's really servicing for that, so we're still, still waiting. Sixty-nine, and, uh, our people have to come. All right, community development, and, uh, acting for April. I'll see all that there. You have any questions on those? We'll move on to our city administrator report, Michael.
First off, I want to thank, uh, Troy and his organization. It was nice enough to give me, uh, kind of a credit there, really, most of the credit's been in his organization. They were the ones that worked with us to make sure that we really have a very impressive package that went out for us, both with just us, but also with, uh, uh, the regional joint water system, so, uh, I can't say enough about the professionalism and, uh, the quality of the product that they, they give us. And, uh, really, uh, I appreciate the, uh, the community gave me the majority of that, to him, he's, he can't say enough about it. Um, first thing I want to talk about was the coffee with the administrator. Did you say that to me, well, uh, you go on, except for one? Those are the ones we had a subject, uh, we got people coming in. The first one, of course, was the broadband initiative, and now we have the committee, and, uh, we're looking, and, you know, we'll talk about that the second. But, uh, the last we had was on litter, which was actually a good conversation to settle with the community about some, some issues that we have with litter, but also some potential renovation efforts. Okay, Susan's there, the police department's there, and I think it was a very good, uh, conversation. The only time I didn't get anybody to show up was when it was an open mic, and you weren't gonna ask anything, and you weren't nobody showed up to ask any questions, so, um, I'm gonna have to give a subject, a specific subject from now on. But it, it, generally speaking, it's been going quite well, and, uh, building the systems involved in it. They didn't let us notice any issues that they're seeing that maybe we're not. And, uh, and so I'm really happy with the way it's been going so far, and next will be next Thursday. Uh, and the subject of the secret at this time, mainly, I haven't decided a hundred percent yet, but, uh, but, uh, we'll have that out probably in one day, uh, next one day, uh, with the subject. Um, with this budget reaching its conclusion, um, we do still have quite a few projects coming up after that. One is updating the strategic plan once a year, of course, the council will update that, uh, to eliminate some things, change some things, add some things. So we're still be working on that once the budget's done. Uh, we also have the capital improvements plan, and, uh, a couple of, uh, a couple of ordinances that have been, uh, been looked at. So, quite a few, uh, things still left to do, uh, even though the budget seems like a pinnacle item, it's, uh, there's everything after that, so don't go on vacation after we're done with the budget, because there's still lots to do. But in the strategic plan, under dynamic community enhanced transportation, uh, I was able to begin the sidewalk repair program. Uh, it was destined to making, uh, the city of Liberty an even more walkable place than it already is. Uh, I'm going to add road repair, which is, is potholes, uh, to this project. Uh, our public works staff will note any road repair locations as well as sidewalks for future extension. There will also be a website location where citizens can notify, uh, the, and that's town, not Tommy. So I just let you know, West Bay was the, the oldest, the oldest. Uh, but notify the town of these areas as well, so the whole point is, is, uh, even public works and, and the police department, if they're driving around, they, they notice an issue with the sidewalk, or there's a pothole, they'll notify us, and we'll put it on, on the list. That's what was hopefully having the citizens get involved, when they notice potholes or problems with sidewalks, they can run in. And what will happen is essentially, sidewalks will usually be repaired as, as we are notified of, as quickly as possible. Uh, potholes for cost effectiveness will probably be about six or seven at a time. Once we have those, uh, then they'll probably be fixed together. But, uh, prioritization and the timing will be up to the public works director, uh, not anyone who can see all the sides out, so that there's no, uh, no hesitation on it, because there really needs to be a whole movie effort. And so we're gonna let the, uh, the director of public works make decisions on when exactly it'll be done, and, uh, how many at a time, things like that, so, um, it will be up to, up to him at this point. But it's a great project, I was wondering, you tasked with, in the, uh, the strategic plan, and, uh, I think it's gonna be a great project. Uh, we already have one on East Street, a new one for when we go off there. We're not finished with it yet, uh, but, uh, we're getting that sidewalk done, and, and we've already gotten probably about a dozen potholes as we're starting this project, so I do think it'll be a valuable, uh, hopefully citizen-involved, uh, project. Um, we do, like I was mentioning before, we do have another meeting with broadband community this week. Uh, we're continuing to work in towards being a citizens-friendly, respectful broadband service, uh, and I feel we're making progress. Every single time, we're taking a step for another step, where it's not, there's no real standing at all. Uh, we've, every time we met, we're closer to that goal. We're not there yet, uh, it's, it's, it's not an easy, uh, process, there's a lot involved in it. But every time we meet, uh, we get closer to that goal. And again, uh, I can't say enough a- about the committee, they're, they're all citizens that just wanted to be involved and, and help the city and themselves, and uh, they came, and it was one of the meetings with the administrator, the conference with the administrator, so it just shows that, uh, you know, when you get together with the citizens, you sit down and have meaningful constructive dialogue, you can get a lot done, not even if it takes a little while, a lot of effort, but it can come. Um, and also, we met with the representative Clemson University, uh, recently, uh, the mayor and I as well as, uh, Brandon from the chamber. And what they're going to work on helping us with is training our entrepreneurs, our, our smaller business owners that one and a half places either downtown near Congress, or some other areas in town, that, we don't have any experience in business, but they know they want to open one. Uh, and a lot of times, as, as we've all seen, a lot, they fail, they're mortons and not, they're going to fail, because they just don't have the skills and the education to know what they're going to do, uh, and how, how involved they need to have their own business. And that's what Clemson University's program does, it's, it's a way to, to give these, and, 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 like that, valuable training on, uh, how to start a business, bookkeeping, uh, marketing, all these things that a lot of new, a lot of business owners just don't know or understand how important this thing is, they're like, well, I've got a great product to sell, so this is going to be easy. And, and they learn the hardware that it sits, very not easy, and so, uh, we're really looking forward to what, uh, Clemson can do, cheering up with us to help educate the people that want to have small businesses that have been in their run. And that's it with the, uh, the administrative report, but I also wanted to point out, it's kind of a administrative report, but also with the finance report, it's especially you see, it's different finance reports you're getting now. Hopefully, this is much easier to read, much less cluttered, giving you the same information, but like I said, it can issue to what you're looking for much more simply. Uh, if anyone has any questions on this, uh, monthly, you, you'll receive this, and of course, I'll answer any questions anyone has. Quarterly, we'll be given an actual, uh, report, uh, that will be, uh, more of a presentation on what we've done that quarter. For spending as well, for revenue, uh, it would basically be more of like a PowerPoint presentation, perhaps, and things like that, to really point out what we're doing with each department, but I wanted to make sure monthly that you receive everything that we're doing in a, uh, much easier presentation, so if you have questions, they're easy to follow. With them, so this, I just, let me know if this is not acceptable, or if anyone of you want the other one, that's fine, I can get it for you, but, uh, I just felt like I might get the last tier of headlines with this one than, than the other we had, because there was so much information that was thrown at you in the other one. Uh, this one, I think, hopefully, is, is much more effective for what we're looking for. Um, if there are any questions, uh, regarding this, I'm happy to answer those. And, uh, as you can see, we're, we're getting down to the end percentage-wise, because they are at the, basically, the end of our year. I just do want to point out, especially with, uh, looking at, uh, you know, the general government, which is, uh, you know, at nine point five five percent, we should be about twelve, we should be about twelve percent. Now remember, we add back in the two hundred thousand dollars that we used, uh, for the, for the truck, if you remember that. That issue was in public works, like, if you add that back in, it's a twelve point five percent, so we're exactly where we want to be. I just want to make sure if you see that, if you wonder about that, that, all's well there. Any questions? Anyone here? A motion? Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, we can finish our city council, so I'll start with Councilor Shune.
I have a report.
Thank you. Councilor Ray?
I have a report.
Councilor Whitaker?
Nothing to report.
Councilor Cassie?
Nothing to report.
Councilor Patrick? Thank you. Okay, so we got that, now we have got to the portion of our meeting to introduce to executive session. So I'm gonna ask for a motion for entering executive sessions.
I'm making a motion.
Okay, Councilor Ray, do you need a motion? And I'll get your second, Councilor Whitaker, any discussion? Okay, we have, this is for South Carolina Code, section thirty dash four dash seventy A, discussion of appointment and point, appointment, compensation, promotion, demotion, discipline or release of an employee, a student or person regulated by a public party, or the appointment of a person to a public party. Councilor, we will be discussing the potential appointment of a city attorney. So, at this time, we have no other discussion, then I will ask for the go-holos in favor of entering the executive session, please signify by raising your right hand, say aye. All right, that's unanimous, thank you. So at this time, I'm gonna ask, um, the public to please get out, you can all step down into the California area. I'm gonna ask for a motion to enter the executive session.
I'm making a motion to enter.
Okay, I have a motion by Councilor Hackett, do I have a second?
Second.
And a second by Councilor Whitaker, do I have any discussion? All those in favor, please. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand and saying aye.
Aye.
We are back into our regular session. So at this time, I'm going to ask for a motion to appoint Mary McCormick as our city attorney.
I have a motion.
Okay, I have a motion by Councilwoman, Nancy, do I have a second?
I have a second.
Okay, and I have a second by Councilwoman Ray Deal. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of appointing Mary McCormick as our city attorney, please signify by raising your right hand and saying aye.
Aye.
All right, we had this unanimous. So thank you, Mary.
Yes, very much.
We're going to have our city court lady, she's going to go ahead and swear in.
Her very first one, this is her first one. So if she does something wrong, you could probably correct her.
Okay, that ain't good. Okay, in the name and by the authority of the state of South Carolina.
In the name and by the authority of the state of South Carolina.
I, in his section name.
Mary C. McCormick.
Do solemnly swear, affirm.
Do solemnly swear, affirm.
That I am duly qualified.
That I'm duly qualified.
According to the Constitution.
According to the Constitution.
Of this state.
Of this state.
To exercise the duties.
To exercise the duties.
Of the office to which I am appointed.
Of the office to which I have been appointed.
And that I will.
And that I will.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Their of.
Their of.
And preserve.
And preserve.
Protect.
Protect and defend.
The Constitution of this state.
And of the United States.
Seven five.
Should have worn my glasses. All right. Want to picture with everybody?
Yeah, can we get a photo with everybody? Why don't you just go outside? Why don't you bring her out down here in front of you guys, if possible, or however you guys want. We like to, why don't you get in there, let me get a picture.
So that concludes our meeting. So I am going to ask for a motion to adjourn.
I have a motion to adjourn.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Ray Deal, do I have a second?
Second.
A second by Councilwoman Shulman, do I have any discussion? All right, all those in favor of adjourned, please signify by raising your right hand and saying aye.
Aye.
Mary, thank you.